Call to order the City of Cannon Falls City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 7th. Roll call, please. Gesmi.
Here.
Growth.
Here.
Jepson.
Here.
Johnson. Cronenberger absent. Lundell.
Here.
Montgomery. Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, I would take an approval for tonight's agenda from the council.
So moved.
I got a motion from Lundell, do I have a second? Second from Mr. Gesmi. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Public input. Public input is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns to the city council. The public input will be no longer than 30 minutes in total length, each speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak. Speakers may address topics relevant to the governance of the city. Speakers must sign up in advance and must provide their name, address, and the topic they intend to address. Comments must be on topic, respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. Any speaker that violates these rules will be asked to sit down. If the speaker refuses to comply, they may be removed from the meeting. Speakers shall not address topics that are the subject of a public hearing, all such comments shall be made at the public hearing. The city council will not generally act on the issues raised by the public input, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. Belinda? Waive the speech tonight?
Right, I'll give you a call. I can tell personally about it.
Thank you. So no public input. Moving on, the public hearing, item A, Resolution 2676, certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes. Neil? Public hearing is officially open?
I'll give you a little, yep. Quarterly, the City of Cannon Falls notifies the property owners whose wastewater bills are due. If the account remains delinquent, we give them an opportunity to come for you and talk about why and how. And the purpose is just to give them an opportunity. So, and if they fail to pay it, if you pass the resolution, we'll certify it to the county for taxes.
Would anybody like to speak for the public hearing? Public hearing, take two. Third and final call for the public hearing. All right, seeing none, public hearing is closed. To the council, I would take a motion to approve Resolution 2676.
So moved.
Motion by Diane.
I'll second.
Second by Derek. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries. Consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. I'll read them off. Item A, just incorrect claims, accounting period ending on February 2nd, 2023. Item B, meeting minutes for January 17th, 2023 city council meeting. Item C, approved pay equity implementation report. Item D, approve hire of part-time cable technician. Item E, approve purchase of body worn cameras for our police department. Item F, approve hire of unscheduled part-time ambulance employee. Item G, approve purchase of a utility vehicle. Item H, approve 2023 pool wages. Item I, approve professional service agreement for Hardwood Estates. Item J, Resolution 2677, support for 2023 state bond requests for John Birch Park wall rehabilitation. Are there any items that the council would like to pull down? Yes.
Item I.
Aye. Item I will become council business, item D. Is there anything else from the council? Seeing none, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Gesmi.
I'll second.
I think Mr. Jepson was first to get the second in there. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries. Council business, item A, number of dogs request. Chief McCormick, if you would like to take this one?
So if you will recall, at our last council meeting, a resident came in and spoke with the council during the open forum. I reviewed the matter, our ordinance is pretty solid, it doesn't have any room for discretion for myself or the administrator, so bringing it back to council to see if you want to provide any direction on how you wish to proceed. F four, one apparently is elderly, whatever term you want to use for a dog, and they would like to be able to have four until that one passes away, and if they can replace it, they would just have a three.
Is there a penalty in the ordinance at all that says what would happen if they do have four? Or more than three, I should say?
I apologize for not having my mic on when I briefed you guys on it. It would likely be a misdemeanor violation, that section, pretty much all the offenses would be misdemeanors.
Okay.
It doesn't call out a specific penalty, but there may be a penalty provision within that section.
Are the dogs a nuisance? I mean, are they, like, running around, or?
I don't know if they're a nuisance or not. Obviously, we received a complaint on it, which is why, you know, an officer made contact with them, which prompted the resident to come to council.
So action from the council tonight? We're looking for...
Direction, before I go back and say, the code is the code. That resident took the time to come to council, and I don't want to short circuit that bodies from the process.
Sure. Well, my opinion, if they moved here with these animals, not knowing, and they came asking for forgiveness and admitted fault, and have straightened their situation of having a dog that is not well and is elderly, I don't know if there's any penalty for, maybe moving forward, we have to clean up that ordinance so that we have maybe a ticketable or how we would handle that so that it doesn't happen in the future, but with this one, I feel like maybe no action?
Yeah, so a little bit of history on that section of the code. For some of you who have been on for a while, perhaps you recall, we previously had a limit of two dogs, and we also required registering with the city. And so what we did was, we went back in, we looked at how many licenses people were actually obtaining from the city relative to the number of dog complaints we had, whether they were a dog at large, you know, people with too many dogs, that type of thing. And brought it to a discussion with the council. Ultimately, we decided to do away with dog licensing. Now residents are just required to have a tag on their dog that identifies who the owner is and how to reach them. And we increased the number of animals from, for dogs, excuse me, we don't regulate other animals in the same manner, of dogs from two to three. And there wasn't any provisions relative to, you know, waivers, penalties, anything, it was just straightforward in changing the numbers. So I'd have to look at the larger component of that whole ordinance to see the penalties or provisions within. And what I reviewed was just the section relative to dogs, the number of permitted.
I think as long as they're not, I don't know, nuisance, a problem house, then let the old one have his day and keep their dogs, but don't get a fourth one again.
And it didn't sound like they were intending to replace.
Right.
They seemed, yeah.
I mean, can we just, like, officially say, let it go right now with the guarantee that they will not replace the illegal fourth dog?
I would believe so. This body has us not enforcing winter parking unless it snows, even though the code says otherwise. And that's what we follow, is what the body's direction was.
Might want to throw a caveat in there if there's any other complaints, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Because it does sound like if they were just reported for having four dogs instead of three, and there wasn't, because I've seen in the paper, we have barking dog, loose dog complaints.
I believe the complaint was number, I'd have to pull the original to take a look at it, but...
Well, I mean, I'm comfortable with just saying, don't let us, don't let it happen, you know, when the old dog goes, let it be done.
So technically, no action from the council, is that the consensus here?
I would appreciate just a formal action, saying this is what our directive is, maybe a motion and approval of following through on that action by staff.
Well, I'm all for, you know, voting to let this go, I'm just, I'm hoping that people aren't going to go out and buy another dog because their next one is going to die in eight, nine years. That's the only problem, but I have no issues with this one.
If the body so chooses, you know, I can certainly go forward with the direction you provided, and if I run into issues, I will bring it back. Sound fair?
Fair. Yep.
All right. Thank you, chief. Council business, item B, revised body camera policy. Chief, up again.
Apparently so. There you go. So the police department has had body cameras for, going on almost 12 years now. Our first ones were purchased in 2011. We were one of the beginning agencies in the state to utilize that tool. The legislature passed a law requiring mandating policies, we had already had a policy. So when we modified our policy, brought it forward following the provisions of the law, public input was permitted at the council meeting, council then approved the policy. We've since changed the cameras that we utilize, we're now utilizing these V300 cameras. If you're, those of you who've been on a while, you recall the previous audit, one of the things that they recommended was incorporating a backend management system. This utilizes that. So in 2019, I didn't print the memo I prepared, but we proposed to council, maybe it was 2020, replacing the old cameras with these. At the time, we already had the policy in place. Lieutenant and I decided we would at least play out one year before we considered modification so we could kind of get a good feel for how these work. And so now we're past that point, and so I consulted with the city attorney. The state law really is on the implementation of the policy, it doesn't specifically call out for modifications to it, but we concluded that, you know, the best course of action was just to follow the same provisions. So we've had this up on our website now for over two weeks, asking for public input, none has been received. And what I'm requesting from council tonight is, again, to receive any public input relative to the proposed policy. And then after that has been received, if any, consider approving the policy that I proposed. The red line version of it is on our website, what you see in front of you would be the final because I'm seeking that approval of a final document.
So seeking approval tonight, or seeking to get it out to the public?
Both.
Look for feedback, and then, okay?
Both. Tonight provides that opportunity for input from the public before the body acts.
Technically, a public hearing, or just asking for public input?
Nope, it does not require a public hearing, it is just input from the public.
Is there any input from the public tonight regarding the body cameras? Becky?
Other than Becky? Oh.
Can I meet him for you?
I read the policy, there's nothing that I want to say about the input, but how in the heck is the public supposed to know to go and look at that? Because, you know, there's got to be a better way of communicating so that the public can know that, oh, hey, we need to go to the police website and we need to read the policy that they're thinking about. So it doesn't surprise me you have no comment, because how are the people supposed to know? They're supposed to go read it. And so I only found out from when I did the agenda.
Okay.
And it looks fine to me, but my question is, why isn't there a way to let the public know something in the paper, or I don't know how to do that, but some way of telling the public, hey, look, can you look this over and give us comments?
And we follow the same provisions we followed the previous time, which was posting it on our city webpage. And I don't have a good answer for you, Becky. We're just trying to follow...
So is there some way, when this happens, again, is there some way you can get it out to the public?
We're just trying to follow the requirements the legislature put on us and meet those standards.
How prevalent was it on the website? Was it on the city homepage?
It was on our homepage.
It was not on the city homepage.
It was on the police homepage.
The department homepage, yes.
I didn't even know the department had a webpage, so...
It's a good point, Becky.
Is there a way we could put a link, like, on Facebook that would link directly to this, and maybe push this back to the next meeting to give another...
Potentially.
If that's something everyone else wanted to do, at least give people, more people around Facebook than the city's web, city police webpage, I would think.
Well, and the Beacon is also our official publication, a lot of information is shared via the Beacon.
I don't know what the legislative intent was, they just referenced, we have to have it on our webpage, so that's what we followed.
Yep. Understandable. I do understand the citizens' concern for wanting more open communication, and maybe for publication purposes, the Beacon in the future might be, is this something we should discuss, or, I mean, obviously, we're following state laws, not just the preferences of the citizens, but, so we're following the legal responsibilities, I understand that. But just to show that we're willing to try to communicate more with the citizens, maybe we do go a step further and put a blurb with the police report in the Beacon when something like this happens in the future?
Yeah, yeah. I, you know, I'll throw the caveat, we provide the Beacon with a lot of information, not everything makes it into the Beacon.
Yep, understandable.
So, you know, I can't guarantee that that will serve that purpose.
Okay.
So can we make that some type of motion to put it in the Beacon for public input now?
Or would that be a separate issue that we wouldn't want to tie into the revised body camera policy?
What if we put it on our webpage and do a link to, you know, that would take a In fact, you're probably doing it right now, as far as I know. But it's...
And it'll still follow the state statute here?
It's about 15 pages long.
It'll still state, or follow the state legal requirements if we put it on our homepage and then link it to you? Okay.
And you said it's about 15 pages, that'd be quite a...
It's about 10, but...
10?
Okay.
For the Beacon, that'd be...
Oh, yeah.
Yep, oh, sure, sure, sure. I get it, I get it.
Well, the blurb in the Beacon could be like, check out the police website for hot new news on body cams, and, you know. Beacon would obviously publish the whole policy, but just say, go to the police commission website, or the police website. But I think that goes to the whole problem of how we're able to effectively share information.
The changes to the policy are more technical than anything.
Sure.
It's removing sections that reference the old camera, inserting the new camera, you know, that type of stuff, some formatting that we followed as we went through it.
Well, we went through it, you and I, this afternoon, so...
I must admit, it wasn't the most stimulating reading I've had.
Probably not.
I did read it, though.
With that said, I would take a motion to approve the revised body camera policy with the addition of, shared on our home website.
I would so move.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lisa. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? And it carries. Item C, Hannah's Bend Park Trail Connection Grant. I'll start us off on this one, in our work session, we had discussed this, and this is also an update then to the public. Earlier today, I spoke to the park board chair, Greg Kurtz, or fair board, sorry, did I say park board? My apologies, fair board, fair board. Greg Kurtz, and he had said verbally over the phone that they intend to sign the agreement to switch the land for the city for Hannah's Bend Park and then the road that will vacate in the fairgrounds. With that said, the item that is on our agenda tonight is the grant that we were approved for that will expire if the work is not done by June 31st. And we have, there's no official deadline, but we have passed the point where we don't think we could get that project done in time. Our engineer has said it is too late, they don't have us on their work schedule, so even if they sign the agreement, you know, as soon as possible, we're not going to be able to get this done. So the action that I need from the council is to allow the Hannah's Bend Park Trail Connection Grant, that we cancel that. Any further discussion? I would take a motion to approve canceling Hannah's Bend Park Trail Connection Grant.
Motion.
The motion by Ryan.
Second.
Second by Steve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. City council business, item D, which was on the consent agenda, item I, pulled down, approve the professional service agreement for Hardwood Estates.
I was not necessarily in favor of the taxpayers lending support for this project, I still have questions about that, I have no problem with developing more housing in town. I do have a problem with the committal of taxpayer money to do that, especially as I look at the three developments that we already have in other phases that are not requesting that the city put forward money for them to go forward. So I would just like to say, if EDA would like to have this agreement, and I know it's not a lot of money, that they have enough money in their budget that they can pay for
Any other discussion? I would entertain a motion to approve the professional service agreement for Hardwood Estates.
So moved.
Motion by Steve.
I'll second.
Derek or Lisa? Derek?
Don't matter.
Okay. So motion by Gesmi, second by Lundell. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Three to two? That's still minus one, three to two, it carries. All right, reports, council committee or commissions, is there, we don't have anybody to, there's no report from the chamber tonight. Joint Powers Trail Board met on January 24th.
I was supposed to be there, but I was ill.
That's our, okay, that's all right. Fair enough, fair enough. EDA, Laura, would you like to handle that, or?
Yes, with the...
Yes, with the approval of the professional service agreement with WHKS, we will get them started with a grading plan and a concept plan with a layout for Hardwood Estates, and they'll also incorporate, you know, some of the trails and a possible safe route to school plan with that as well. And then the other thing that we did with EDA in our meeting this last week is that we started working on our goal planning for 2023, what we feel is some attainable goals for this year, and then also looking into the next five years as well, so...
Thank you. Park Board, Derek?
Yeah, I can take that. We talked for a while about getting new wayfinding signage for the trail, I want to say about five different locations kind of around town showing, you know, arrows, this is this way, and this is that way. That's kind of in the early stages. We talked about the grant that we just turned down. Pool wages, kind of basic, how much the lifeguards and staff are making, and then some park signs, so...
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Public Works Commission.
Yeah, I'll take that, too. Really, the main thing was buying the new UTV. We talked a little bit about the Riverside Terrace, the sewer meter they installed, but didn't take any formal action on that.
Okay, all right. Danny, we'll start with you, anything?
Just got a little breather from snow plowing, so we're repairing equipment and actually going out to cul-de-sacs and hauling snow right now. And on the utility side, we had to do some repairs on W3, but that's up and running again, so good to go.
Great. Diane, anything from you?
Monday, we'll have Planning Commission meeting, we'll be talking about the Endress Concept Plan, and we're going to be discussing an ordinance change in the B2.
All right. Laura?
Nothing.
Chief. So Dan already alluded to the break in snow removal. We're going to bask in the warm forty degree temperatures tomorrow, I believe, but I am confident we will probably get more snow. So I just want to remind residents, when it does snow, even if it doesn't seem like the Public Works is going to be out plowing, it's a good time just to get your vehicle off the street because they may come in and plow. One of our storms, we had quite a few vehicles that ended up being towed, and it was because people just didn't think the Public Works was going to be out. And, you know, the process, we put out the information on Facebook, I think the city reposted on theirs, but it's not fail-safe, and, you know, people may miss it, and it's no fun when they come out and their car's gone in the morning. So we want to try to avoid that by just making sure people get their cars off the streets when it snows, regardless of the amount. It may only be an inch, but it might be followed by a really hard freeze, and Public Works wants to get those streets scraped down before it becomes, you know, rutted ice. So it's hard to say definitively, it's this amount of snow is when they come in. So that's my information for the public. Neil?
You heard from me for about an hour on the work session, I think we got it covered.
All right, covered all the bases. Council members, Lisa? Anything?
No.
Okay, Ryan?
Nope.
Derek?
Diane?
Steve?
Me either.
Really? Nothing. I've got nothing either. The schedule for the meetings are here on the agenda and on the website, so encourage citizens to be involved and attend those meetings. I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Gesmi, second by Diane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Meeting adjourned.